Good evening. Before we begin tonight's council meeting, many have gathered here for a special and solemn occasion, a moment that both honors and remembers a true hero of our community. Tonight, we posthumously present the Carnegie Medal of Heroism to Anthony Paul Deal, a brave man from the city of Beaver Creek who made the ultimate sacrifice in an attempt to save his nephew Elijah Brett from drowning. I'd like to request the presence of those closest to Anthony to join me up front, his partner Laura Steele, children Robert, Sophia, Athena, and Alexia, Elijah's father Andrew, and his mother and two sisters, if you would join me up front. The Bible allows us there's no greater love than to lay down one's life for another. Anthony Deal exemplified this profound truth with his selfless act of bravery, embodying this essence of a hero. Tonight, we come together to honor the memory of a man who, on July 13th, 2022, gave his life attempting to rescue his beloved nephew. Anthony Deal was awarded the Carnegie Medal posthumously in September for his courageous effort made while vacationing with his family in Lake Michigan. Elijah, who was seven years old, plodding shallow waters with a bodyboard and other family members when the waves began to intensify. With no lifeguards on duty, Anthony fearlessly swam out to save his nephew. They're initially close. The harsh conditions of the water caused them to become separated, and tragically, both Anthony Deal and Elijah Brett lost their lives that day. Today, Anthony Deal is a hero to many, including the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission, which is an organization founded by Andrew Carnegie in 1904 to recognize the extraordinary acts of heroism. The fund has honored 10,405 people with the Carnegie Medal, acknowledging their exceptional courage in the face of extraordinary risk. On behalf of the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission and our grateful city, I now have the solemn honor of presenting the Carnegie Medal to Laura Steele, Anthony Deal's longtime partner and their children. This medal symbolizes not only Anthony's bravery, but also the enduring impact of his sacrifice on our community. May his legacy inspire us to live with the same courage, selflessness, and love that defined his final moments.
All right. So as we all know, we are here because of the selfless actions of a kind-hearted man, Anthony Deal. Although he is not blood-related to me, I still think of him as a father. From when he and Mom met to our last meal of cheeseburgers, he was there for us, for all of us. And on that night, three score, 17 weeks, and two days ago, everything changed. We know that we are gathered here tonight because he was willing to risk his life for us, and I bet he's smiling down upon us from heaven. And it's not the award I care about, it's the fact that I had such an awesome father figure. His death was unexpected, but it's all just life, although life might never be quite the same. And I feel Tony is well worthy of his reward, but more importantly, what's going to happen now?
Dude, I thought you did like writing paragraphs. You have five paragraphs for a speech.
What's that?
Good evening. If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember DeWer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littoral.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Now, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Bales for the pledge.
If you all could join me in the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a brief prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we embark upon this new year, we come together with a new mayor and a new council member. Please grant our entire council open minds, hopeful hearts, and thorough information in order to thoughtfully govern our beloved city. Please allow us to lead with wisdom and insight through integrity, compassion, and foresight. May our decisions be guided by the common good, fostering a community where every voice is heard, valued, and uplifted. Grant us the grace to understand that while not every decision may align with everyone's perspective, let us engage in respectful dialogue, exercising sound and lawful judgment, and always prioritizing what is best for the entire city of Beaver Creek. Allow us to lead with open minds, embracing diverse viewpoints, making decisions rooted in the collective well-being and progress for our community. May our actions inspire hope, spark positive change, and create a Beaver Creek that thrives in unity and prosperity. Amen.
And I think we have a change to the agenda this evening to remove item 7-A. A motion to that effect.
Move to amend the agenda removing item 7-A. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now, I need a motion to accept the amended.
Move to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
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 And we have a set of minutes in front of us from November 27th, 2023, the regular meeting.
Will we approve the November 27th regular meeting in minutes, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions?
Abstain? Okay.
And then we have the minutes from the November, or excuse me, December 11th, 23 regular meeting.
Move to approve the December 11th, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, first item up, public hearing, PUD 23-5.
Ordinance 24-1, and ordinance amending the zoning map by approximately, by rezoning approximately 46.864 acres of land from A1 agricultural to R-PUD residential planned unit development, located on the north side of Swigert Road, approximately 800 feet east of the intersection of Swigert Road and Darsh Road, and further described as Book 3, Page 24, Parcel 1 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Do we have an applicant here tonight? Come forward, state your name, address.
Good evening. My name's Sam Reese. I'm a land planner with Fisher Homes Grand Communities. Address is 3940 Olympic Boulevard, Suite 400, Erlanger, Kentucky, 41018. So this is our rezoning request for the Turner property in Beaver Creek, Ohio. A little bit about us at Fisher Homes, we are a privately owned Cincinnati-based home builder founded in 1980. We currently build in nine markets across six states. One of the things we pride ourselves in is maintaining our high customer satisfaction and creating the best total new home experience for our customers. So looking at the site, it consists of one parcel, about 46.7 acres, currently zoned A1 agricultural, and is located right off Swigert Road. Additionally, it's also located directly adjacent to Walnut Grove Park and the Fairfield Downs subdivision. Again, the site's currently zoned A1 agricultural. As you can see, many surrounding properties directly next to our site are zoned single-family residential and residential PUD, and we are proposing to rezone the site to residential Some of the constraints with the site, the site itself is mostly flat, and our existing communities directly to the west and north, and we also have a property owner directly to the southeast end of our property as well. And this is the area of the site looking southwest, looking east, northeast. So vision. So with our proposed zoning for the site, we have a maximum density of 2.1 units per acre with a minimum lot width of 60 feet. We do have specific setback requirements for home sites directly abutting those neighboring communities, so the home sites that go back up to the north, just highlight in purple, those will have a 50-foot rear yard setback, and the home sites backing up to the west, which is highlighted in orange, those will have a 40-foot minimum rear yard setback, and those are established to remain consistent with those neighboring subdivisions. And lastly, we also have a total building separation of 15 feet, which is a five-foot minimum of each side on each lot. And so looking more at the proposed product for our community, for the community, this is our designer collection, this is one of our single-family detached products, and this home site, and this product in particular, is geared more towards a move-up home buyer, so people with young and growing families who are looking to upsize from their previous homes, that's what this product would be more geared towards. And then this is our masterpiece collection, this is also one of our single-family detached products, this is one of our higher-end products, the larger home and larger home site, and this is a step up above from what our designer collection is. And so one of the things we pride ourselves on is our community design and creating a sense of place for our residents. We utilize that through our landscaping, through our menu design, as well as our community theming, and with this community in particular, we're leaning more towards the garden theme, which is displayed by those images shown above. And lastly, our next steps after this would be our, the second reading from City Council. Thank you all so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions the staff may have.
Staff, Mr. Burkett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Again, the case you have before you is PUD 23-5. It's a zoning request for approximately 47 acres that's currently zoned agricultural, and they're looking to rezone it for residential planned unit development. Just to go over the overall process, the PUD process is two phases. The first phase, which we're on tonight, is the rezoning. So this is when we talk about the generalities, what uses are allowed in the PUD, any densities that are allowed, but we really don't go into, and I know the applicant showed some architectural samples, but that's not really for this evening. This evening, we're really just talking about the uses and setbacks and the like. So when we get to the second phase, then we would bring up more of the landscaping, any lighting requirements, architectural requirements, where the streets are, how they're going to lay out sidewalks, things like that, but that's more of the specific details why it's called the specific site plan stage. So this evening, we're on the first reading and public hearing of the rezoning request, and should this move on to the second reading and ultimately approved, if it were approved, then we would go to the second phase, which then we would bring the planning commission and City Council would make the decision. So again, we're here just to talk about uses and the general scope of the project. Project's located in the southern end of Beaver Creek, near where Swigert Road kind of makes a 90-degree turn, and then ultimately Darsh Road is about 800 feet to the west. This is an aerial photo of the property as it stands. There's a large barn in the center of the property that's kind of dilapidated and falling down, a large field on the west end of the property, and then trees around the perimeter of the property. The property's zoned A1 agricultural. To the west is R-PUD, a couple of R-PUDs. To the north is an R1A single-family, and then also there's some A1 to the north as well. There is a single-family lot that abuts this property along Swigert Road. It's R1AA, which is also single-family, just minimum acreage is one acre for those lot sizes, but it's essentially R1A except the one-acre minimum. The land use plan has this categorized as low-density residential, up to three dwelling units an acre is what the land use plan says. It also has it designated as vacant plan area 91 or VPA 91, and what that, the text in the land use plan specifically says for that is that along, in conjunction with development of this, improvements should be done to Swigert to help with the increased traffic based on the development, but also that the new neighborhood shouldn't want to be developed be interconnected with the existing streets. The language in the land use plan states that and says that that's important. So here's the, and again, this is a lot more detail than what we would normally get for a concept plan. It does show lot lines and setbacks and street locations, but again, normally on a rezoning, we would get just a general outline of the property and then some general locations of entrances. So just, this won't necessarily be the exact plan if it goes to specific site plan, but a few things that we added in the proposed ordinance, one, that the uses should be those that are allowed in R1A, so that's single-family, so no duplexes, no multifamily. Places of religious assembly, those are allowed in R1A. Nursery and daycare centers would be allowed in this. Those would be a conditional use, so that would have to go through another layer of approval, and assisted living facilities, and those are also allowed in R1A. It says 2.2 dwelling units an acre for the density, but actually, that should say 2.1. It says 2.1 in the proposed ordinance and in the staff report. So the maximum density permitted with this proposal is 2.1 dwelling units an acre. Maximum width of the lot should be 60 feet, and as the applicant stated, R-PUDs state that the, if they abut existing residential, then the lot sizes of those lots that abut the existing residential should match the minimum lot size of the existing residential. So you'd have the 20,000 square foot lots on the north and the 16,000 square foot lots on the west. There's proposed setback, front yard, rear yard, and side yard setbacks that are outlined in the ordinance, and that's to help match with similar recent single-family residential developments such as Sky Crossings and Cedar Brook, but also states the one that abuts the existing residential should match those setbacks as well. One thing that, another condition that's in the proposed ordinance is that on any future site plan, so we didn't want to regulate it in the ordinance, but state that any future site plan must show 25-foot grading limits, and that would be designated by, you know, the, any builder would designate those areas so that no grading would occur within those first 25 feet, and that helps preserve an existing tree line that's there, but then ultimately, when the lot's sold, then it would revert back to the landowner, the homeowner, so that they can maintain the yard as they see fit. Just a few things. One, I know that there's always a lot of concern about stormwater and existing stormwater problems, and this might exacerbate it. Our Chapter 154, the stormwater management portion of the code of ordinance, has stated that development or redevelopment cannot be done unless it is designed in such a way that there will be no increase to any existing issues, so if there were stormwater issues on a site, you can't make it worse. Typically, we see developments come in and are over-engineered so that it does improve what's out there currently, so any of the runoff that goes off is typically improved because of the costliness of trying to get it done the second time if they didn't do it right the first time. So we see projects typically over-engineer, but again, that's the second phase, that's a specific site plan issue, but I just wanted to bring it up and let everybody know that that's certainly going to be considered when we get to the specific site plan. Also, want to give a general idea of the city's role in development. We don't have the ability to stop development outright, you know, we're subject to the land use plan. The zoning code can help development occur orderly and separate uses so that you don't have incompatible uses right next to each other, but really, the only way to stop development per se, if a private landowner wants to develop, and they want to do something that's allowed in the land use plan, the only way the city could stop it is to purchase that land. So our role is not really to stop development, at least from the staff's perspective, our role is not to stop development, but it's to help guide development in an orderly fashion. Also, we can't consider school impacts as a part of rezoning, and traffic impacts can only be considered if the city does their own traffic study and shows that there's some extraordinary exception to rezoning the property. We took this to Planning Commission in December, and Planning Commission made a recommendation of approval, staff recommends approval, and subject to the conditions in your ordinance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Burkett. Now, it's time for public input. If anyone wants to speak, please come up, state your name, address. You will have three minutes. You will be on a timer. You can get up to two more three-minute sections from one of your neighbors or two of your neighbors for a total of nine minutes, so come on up. And remember, this is about the zoning phase.
Yes.
That's where we are.
I know, I see some plans at Belisha Reinhardt, 3805 Maple Grove. So there was a couple of things that were brought up at the Planning Commission meeting about lot size. It doesn't seem to me that the calculation should include that retention lake, that's not really green space or countable space, so I wanted to mention that, and also the fact that, I know we can't stop this, we don't want to affect the Turner's land, but why is it that only the abutting property should match that? We already have a very dense area because of the Bellicera property that was added already with 200 homes. I know that's in Sugar Creek, but it's just south of Darst. We have already dangerous traffic intersections at Swigert and Darst, and also the curves on both Darst and Swigert, those would need to be considered. I also looked at, he mentioned at the last meeting about interconnectivity and stubstreets. In my old development off Shakertown, and I sent this, I think, in my email, there are two connections that were possible on stubstreets that were as close as Mesquite and Maple Grove, and they only did one as a stubstreet, the other was a foot trail. So it doesn't mean that you have to do that, I think there really should be another outside egress point, instead of generating all that traffic that's going to go through and most of it down the main drag of Maple Grove, which already has an intersection that's a little precarious with just two-way stop, it's absolutely going to need to be a four-way stop, and there's drainage issues on Maple Grove on both sides in the backyards that I'm very concerned about. One thing that was also brought up at the last meeting with respect to traffic, we don't want to turn into what Exit 7 has turned into down in Bellbrook or Centerville because of the overuse there. All the base traffic is now routing through Exit 10 and coming through our neighborhood. Everybody that lives south of there in that area is coming through, so it's just going to really exacerbate those problems, and that puts pressure on utilities, police, fire, all that, generating all that traffic. I think that's my main points I wanted to make, so if we can, one thing is about the calculation that I think is most important, if we can make the lot sizes larger, that's going to put less of a burden on that area that is already overburdened. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dave Soapcheck, 3536 Swigert. So I live up around in the curve, about five houses up on Swigert from this property. We're talking about traffic and why that's important to me. We have a sidewalk there. My little kids, I have 11 and twin five-year-olds, they play on that sidewalk. From South Fairfield, the four-way stop to the curve is a drag strip. Every night, every day, cars get there and they go as fast as they can into that curve, and we talk about why I think that this traffic study's important, because I think we need to actually get the data that shows that. Additionally, I know this isn't directly Fisher's Home problem, right, but further down where Swigert and South Alpha meet, you have Oberer who's going to build, 117 homes on the Kubander Farm, potentially, one day, if the master facility plan gets approved, you're going to have a new high school right there at the corner of Indian Ripple and South Alpha, and all of that traffic's going to be coming up and down there. The other issue that I look at and I worry about is, like I said, we have a sidewalk. If you guys decide to widen that road, you're now moving the road closer to my home, and this is a 40 mile an hour road, because you guys consider it city as well. So it's not 35, it's not residential, you have 40 mile an hour people just spinning, going down there as fast as they can, and a lot of them try to hit 40 by my house, which is the third house after the stop sign. So as we're thinking about this and why the traffic study's important, and why I think it's critical for us to look at everything that's happening along Swigert and South Alpha, because at the end of the day, you're impacting a lot of that flow of traffic, there's a lot of safety, and then in fact, as ironic as it is, the night of the last time we talked about this, there was actually a head-on collision at the four-way stop at South Alpha, or not at South Alpha, Swigert and South Fairfield, which, how serendipitous is that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone?
Good evening. Mark Human, 3584 Swigert Road. Everybody said a lot already, right, and we don't want to affect the Turner's, there's no ill will there. I think it really comes down to, again, the lot sizes are really crammed in there, can that green space be spread out, right, make it a little bit different? A retention pond doesn't do a whole lot for anybody, it makes the one house look nice, but to be able to spread that out, that corner, I live right by the corner, every, I would say at least twice a week, somebody goes through that fence line or goes into the signs there, they're constantly wiping out, it's extremely dangerous, the traffic's increased a ridiculous amount, and as others have mentioned, you know, all the adjacent neighborhoods are half-acre lots, right, and nobody's really talked about, even across the street, almost everything's five acres. Why aren't we doing something a little bit closer in line? When you actually do the calculations, those 16,000 square foot ones are three-quarter of an acre, I'm sorry, they're .367 of an acre, very small. Their bigger lots are half-acre, and that's only that little small section, right, a little bit less. So there's just lots going on there, I know you can't affect the schools, and you guys aren't considering that, but kids in that neighborhood are in buses, they're, not buses, they're in trailers, right? Where overcrowded this can be, it's just, there's a lot going on that I think the city needs to start taking care of the city, the roads, when you go down Darsh Road, that thing's like a bumper car. I mean, that is so horrible, where they did that cut-in and stuff, it's ridiculous. I'll only go one direction, the other side. The, and that intersection there, too, accidents all the time. I mean, that, that is so horrible where they did that cut-in and stuff. It, it's ridiculous. I'll only go one direction, the other side. The, and that intersection there, too, accidents all the time. There's just a lot going on in that area. Again, nothing, nothing against the Turner's, nothing against the farm. Know it's going to happen, but let's at least try to do it and make it look nice, make it where you're not able to touch your neighbor by sticking your hands through the windows. I mean, let's, let's make it nice. 15 foot's pretty close. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, my name is John Hale, 387 Redwood Boulevard. I'm not in direct line of fire like these other gentlemen and ladies are, but I am in the neighborhood. And I believe that the small postage stamp sized lots that they're advocating, I know what this looks like now because we have a new plat right across the, the road from our plat, and we can see what that looks like. And you can literally put your hand out one window and, with a can of corn, and somebody can grab it from the other house. I remember doing that at my grandmother's house on Colorado Boulevard in Dayton, but this is Beaver Creek. And I would like for you gentlemen and ladies to think of Beaver Creek as something a little better. And so I would like to see you make sure that the lot sizes of this development are compatible with the lot sizes in the plat that is right next door and will be tied into according to the map there. So I'd like to see that affected. I'd also like for you to think about whether or not I'm going to have another water pressure reduction with this additional development. Seems like, since they put in that new plat, seems like I'm getting to the point where sometimes in the shower, the water's just trickling down. I don't know whether any of the other members here have seen that or not, but that I would like to see addressed. The water pressure is dropping with more development. That's it. I'm gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Claus, 3535 High Point Court. There's some inconsistencies in acreage, how it's calculated for different purposes, which is ridiculous. My lot doesn't say I own part of my street. The street shouldn't count in the acreage. I don't know how they're calculating that there's, I don't remember what the stat was, two-point, how many houses, point, for 2.2 acreage or something? That's not counting the streets, the curves, the sidewalks going in, and the retention pond. They're not putting 96 houses in at that, on that much land. These are going to be very tiny lots. The deeds aren't going to say the people have half-acre lots. Houses are going to be crammed in there. Going to be a lot of people in a tight amount of space. All our real estate taxes, are they living close? Going to go up if the houses are, I don't think they're going to be anywhere close to selling at that amount. Our houses are going to actually go down in value because everything's going to be cramped. Our, the rest of houses are going to go, our real estate taxes, everybody surrounding is going to go up. Our houses are actually going to sell for less because we're going to have these eyesore houses cramped in. It's never considered, but it's dangerous. It's very dangerous living by that curve in Swigert, as everybody stated. I thought after the last meeting, I thought the rezoning board kind of agreed there did need to be a traffic study, even though for some reason, we're allowed to mention that. I also thought the city could make developers pay for impact fees. Haven't heard that mentioned by anybody. We're also going to be the only development around without a turn lane. People are going to have to lose their houses if they're going to build a turn lane in there. I don't know how they're ever going to do that. This is just ridiculous. It's maybe good for the developer. I can't see where it's good for any of the existing people that have lived in Beaver Creek all these years. I don't think that many houses there. It's just poor planning for everybody. I think, maybe I'm all for the Turner's.
Could you get closer to the mic, please?
I'm sorry. I just don't see where it's good for, I mean, I'm glad the Turner's got a good price for their property. I think it's good for the developers, but I don't see where it's good for the existing residents of Beaver Creek. I think it's very poor planning at this point. I don't think we're, it's very, I know we're not allowed to feel how it's going to impact the schools, the traffic, the safety, the other citizens, the real estate value of anybody else living around there. I don't understand all these rules, why the acreage isn't consistent with how everybody's deeds read, et cetera. I don't know why we can't discuss these other things that have an impact on us. I don't know why any impact fees are going against the developer. That's not discussed. My time's up, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Remember, this, this is still just about the rezoning. We're not talking about the specific site plan at this point. So you can talk about that if you like, but just, we can't really consider that at this particular meeting.
My name's Ken Shelton. I live at 428 Darst Road. I'm the one that has five acres down there on that 90-degree bend. That is absolutely terrible. I was told when they built 180-some houses across the street from me, from Bob Geyer, when he was one of the engineers, that there wouldn't be no traffic input, no, no problems at all. I'm really concerned about this project. I, I remember the Turner's when they used to fly an airplane, the old man in and out of the back of that property. Walnut Grove, Hawthorne Glen, all of them are half-acre lots. I really think the community wouldn't have an issue, I'm talking for myself, but half-acre lots wouldn't be so bad. You've got three exits going out of the, the back of that property that only feeds into one on Darst Road. So it seems like it's going to be a major issue with traffic. My other issue is, okay, we do a subdivision like this. Us taxpayers, are we going to have to pay for a roundabout, one of those roundabouts there at Darst and Swigert and Studsman? Are we going to have to pay to widen Darst Road and straighten the curb out down by me? It just, I, I think we're having a huge traffic problem there. My other issue is, I haven't seen drawings other than something small. The streets, how wide are the streets going to be? If you have houses that are 30 feet apart from each other, where are you going to have off-street parking? Let's say my mom has a birthday party. We have how many friends in that? Is that street wide enough? And then, is it wide enough if you park on one side of the road and you need to get a fire truck or an emergency vehicle down there? Appreciate all your thought on this.
Thank you very much.
I'm Joe Bradford, 267 Southwood Trail. And I know this is not about, this is about the zoning, which I understand. But I live on one of those main, right off of those main streets, Maple Grove. And when you can see this, you, you already know that most of the people who live out in that area, when they are going somewhere, the vast majority of them are going west. They're going to Dayton. They're going to get on 675. So a whole lot of these people are going to be using probably my street. I mean, there is, from what I can see, there's only one real exit that goes in the east direction, and all the other ones are going in the west direction. So all the traffic from this area is going to probably go, a bunch of it, down my street. So that's my concern.
Thank you very much.
I'm a little nervous. Be patient with me. And my husband, Ronald Henderson, has given me his three minutes also. My name is Gaye Henderson.
He'll have to come up and give that to you, if you don't mind.
Pardon me?
He'll have to come up, give his name and give that to you, if you don't mind.
My name is Gaye Henderson, and I reside at 3815 Maple Grove Lane. And first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Bales for opening up with a prayer. It's always to look to God first in all, everything. And Mr. Bales, you mentioned in your prayer and asking God for grace to understand and thrive in unity and prosperity. And I would like to add to your prayer, okay? I would like to add referencing First King 3 and 10. And that was a prayer where Solomon asked for wisdom first. He set aside prosperity. He set aside asking for anything for an individual, including himself, and he asked for wisdom. And that, and asking for wisdom, God granted him everything else. And as we all know, that God gave him everything, and he was richer than any man, including any man that lived to this current day. So I would like to ask this, that God grant this panel wisdom, because I think you're going to need it. And if you remember in the last meeting, I was the one that said there, there need not be a win-lose situation, that the Turner's had a right to sell their, their property, okay? And that the company that is looking to seek to buy their property had a right as a company to purchase it, because that's our right as individuals to make decisions, and our right as commercial entities to buy company for prosperity, okay? And I still feel that way. And I think as a panel, that you're going to need wisdom in making the right decisions to come to that win-win situation. And I think that you can do it if you set aside one thing, and that is looking for prosperity. And look at what needs to take place to look at a community, the Beaver Creek community, and what's in the best interest of a community. And I asked the question, when you looked in your prayer and you asked God for unity and prosperity, what community were you looking at? Okay? Because when you look at maximizing, is this still on? Because I don't hear feedback. And I need for this to be heard. When you look at unity and prosperity in your prayer, were you looking at the Beaver Creek community? Or were you looking at maximizing the land ratio of 2.1 at the request of the commercial entity that wants to buy the land? Or were you looking at prosperity? Because in looking at that, you can't be looking at the Beaver Creek community when you look at the amount of traffic that's going to come through the small secondary streets that's going to dump the traffic. You can't be looking at it when you look at the already burdensome infrastructure and looking at what is going to take place in the school systems and the infrastructures that are already cumbersome and burdensome by the lack of resources that we have. And I'm not here to dump on you as a panel. I'm not here to dump on Beaver Creek as having the challenges that we have. I'm here to add to your prayer, to give you wisdom, okay? That God give you the discernment and the knowledge that needs to take place, the right decisions for everyone, not just the Turner's, not the corporation that wants to buy the land, but all of us. Look at all of us and put yourselves in our situation and what we're going to have to go through. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Griffith, and I reside at 3705 Swigert Road. And so the development that is in question here is going to be built right across the road from me. Obviously, when I bought that house, wasn't hoping for a whole community of houses to be built right across the street from me. And in tune with what this lady had just said was is that I hope that you do keep in mind what Beaver Creek residents want, because we do have a lot of traffic on that road and a lot of accidents. The last meeting that we had, the gentleman who spoke right there with the gray hat on about the accident at Fairfield, South Fairfield and Swigert, that was correct. I left here and went straight home, and there was an accident right there. The curve right there, the very sharp curve, is, is just very, very dangerous. Then, it wasn't even three weeks ago, and there was an accident where a dump truck hit a school bus and injured one of the children on the school bus on that road. So I do have one question. Are you guys allowed to ask, answer questions?
At this point, it's just public comment. We, we don't have an interaction, otherwise we'd be here all night.
Oh.
We'll be happy to talk with you offline, but during the meeting.
Okay. All right, fair enough. We can do that. Okay, so what about the traffic study? Has that been completed yet? Or you can't answer that question? Okay.
At this point, I don't, I'm not aware of it. I'm not aware of one, let's put it that way.
With regards to the stormwater issues, there are issues at the last meeting. I had mentioned that I know at the plant there on Factory Road that there was a failure with that system a couple of years ago where the stormwater was coming up through the manholes. And the city of Beaver Creek's plan to fix that was just to bolt them down and tighten or make them tighter, while our leach fields for our wells were contaminated, basically. And so these are other things that I believe need to be addressed. And I don't know if they are being addressed, but I think they need to be considered. That being said, and I know that the schools aren't a big deal, but in reality, they are. Nobody can deny that. And so I'm wondering if it is applicable or feasible to build larger homes on larger lots and still get the property tax values? And I think the benefit of that to the city and to the residents of this community and all of Beaver Creek is that you're bringing in higher income earners, more educated peoples to really help the community grow in a better way. So that being said, I'll be asking you folks some questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Reinhardt, 3805 Maple Grove. I'm going to give my three minutes. Sorry, got excited, forgot one thing. So, so one of the big ones, my friend Kenny reminded me of it, is really the taxpayers, right? Mark Human. The, so, so one of the things I really hope that you guys take into account with this is, it's not fair for me, not fair for you guys, not fair for anybody in here to pay taxes to help build these roads, take care of the new exits, extend all these things. That absolutely should go onto the builder, right? And should be something, and it can be done. I've looked at a lot of different things. I talked to a lawyer. It absolutely can be levied onto the builders. And I think you guys should really think hard about if, if there's road improvements, which are very obvious that they need to be done and widening, those should be things that if the builder wants to do this, they should be responsible for. Not us as taxpayers, not you as taxpayers, right? Pass it on to the people causing the impact. Same thing with that, that analysis. I heard somebody say earlier for the car study that Beaver Creek had to pay it, and we didn't have money and hadn't done it yet. Why are you paying it? That should be their burden to prove. They should have, that should be one of the criteria for, to even make it this far. You don't even know if it can afford to have that much space, that much extra traffic. It absolutely should be covered by them. The exit, you know, we, everybody's talking about there in Bellbrook how crazy that exit is. Exit 10's, when it turned into the same thing. It's already getting way worse with just that new development. We really need to do some traffic analysis, real ones, during peak times and see what impact you're really going to have. And that should not be at your guys' expense or our expense. That should be on the builder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Fletcher, 3645 Swigert Road, Beaver Creek. I have a problem with the exit coming out of what you, I live on, on Swigert there, and you will have the exit, all this is your traffic, come right into my driveway. And another thing, you've got, you show dense housing on the, on one side, and all the houses on the east side of Swigert Road there are five-acre lots. Most, most of them are. And you're And you're having, you're having two houses to an acre, dumping into, right across the street there, you will have five acre lots. Surely you could put a buffer zone in between, on that area there, and would make some kind of transition from your one acre, two acre, or three, two and three houses per acre to five acre lots. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll close the public input part of this and council input. Start over here with Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted the gentleman from Fisher Homes to address this issue of lot size. I mean, I understand, you've heard people talk about it in the audience. I'm just interested, is there any flexibility on that at all? I understand there's economics involved.
That's site plan.
Site plan?
That would be a site plan.
I'm sorry, okay.
This is just for zoning.
I apologize. Wrong thing. Go ahead.
Pardon me? No, no, we go through the zoning and then we go to the site plan. That would be the next thing, that would be the next thing that comes back to us. And that's when all these, a lot of these questions that you brought up tonight would be addressed, more so than the zoning. We're just talking strictly zoning tonight. Councilman Schwartz?
I do have a question for staff. Mr. Burkett, thank you.
That's fine.
Could you address Ms. Reinhardt's questions, and I think there were a couple of others that were curious about how we calculate density and lot sizes and what's taken into consideration?
Yes, density is simple. It's just the number of units, or the total acreage and the number of units, dwelling units per acre. So it's just a flat, dwelling units per acre. There's an instance in parkland dedication where if it's really hilly unusable land and they can't just dedicate that to the city and, as part of their parkland dedication. But from a density standpoint, it's just simply the amount of acres and the number of units you're going to put in the acres. We also, am I done?
Yeah.
In the Impact Fee District, which is above, north of Kemp, we don't use the acreage in that for the calculation, because that ultimately is being paid for by the city in the Impact Fee District. Any of the public roads, any of the main roads.
So when we're taking into consideration density, we aren't taking into consideration, because I guess when we're looking at zoning, we have no idea what's going to go in there at the zoning point. We have an idea, but when we're considering the rezoning, obviously, we don't know what size retention ponds we're going to need, we don't know what size, what kind of roads are going to be put in there. So those things aren't taken into consideration during the rezoning phase, is that correct?
Correct.
In calculating density.
Right, and you wouldn't want to penalize a developer for wanting to do open space or having a pond that's correctly sized instead of doing an underground stormwater detention system and having no extra landscaping areas or anything like that? Because if we only counted the lots, then they would have the maximum number of lots without any open space or common area.
And then you also addressed something else that I wanted to ask about, which was the impact fees. Could you explain that a little further, please?
Sure. In the, actually, we have an impact fee district, which, as I stated, is pretty much everything north of Kemp. So anytime you build residential, commercial, or office, or any kind of additional square footage of structure, then you, there's an impact fee calculation based on the use. And then any public improvement, such as widening of main roads or things like that, the city's on the hook for paying for that in the impact fee district. And we use that, use the money that's deposited in that to pay for the overall traffic system in the impact fee district. So if something's built over behind the mall and it's, there's widening needed up on Pentagon Boulevard, then that impact fee money will help typically pay for our portion of a grant to help widen or repay, or not repay, but widen the roadway. Outside of the impact fee district, which this area is not in the impact fee district, any improvements like on Swigert, like a turn lane, if the traffic study warrants a turn lane, or, then those will be paid for by the developer, because it's not in the impact fee district.
Thank you, that's incredibly helpful. I think that is all the questions I have for staff at this time. Thank you, Mr. Burkett. I do have one question for legal. Could you explain the traffic study and how or what, if anything, we can consider at the rezoning phase? I think there's a little bit of confusion on that, at least from my perspective.
Sure, and I haven't seen the traffic study, so I'm not going to explain specifics of it.
Oh, I don't know if there is one. That's, my question is whether it's even something, if there was one, is it something we could consider?
It is, yes, yes. At rezoning or at specific site plan, we could certainly consider the traffic study to make a determination of how to, how to maintain safe ingress and egress from this particular development, whether some additional right-of-way is needed. One of the challenges, I think, in this particular piece of property is that if I look at the, and I was trying to determine that right now, but unfortunately, I can't clearly determine that, but we're going to have to make a determination clear, and the city engineer may know this, but it would appear that half that road is also in the township. Is it all ours? Okay, so it's all ours, but it also is a, well, we kind of went through, it's also a very long road, so that's going to be an impact in there too, as to, and realizing that, you know, the engineers are going to have to speak about it, but certainly, we can look at that aspect, you know, because we frequently do. When we've done development, we look at whether, you know, we should limit some right-in, right-out, acceleration, de-acceleration lanes, things to make it, make safe. Connectivity is also a factor of.
But that is at the specific site plan.
It's all specific, yes.
This is not at the rezoning phase.
Yes, we don't, yes.
So there's nothing that we can take into consideration during the rezoning in regards to traffic?
No, right now, I mean, we don't have the specifics.
Okay, okay. I don't have any other questions, Mayor, thank you.
This citizen input is finished. We'll talk to you, as I said, offline, but right now, we're in with council. So, Councilman Littrell?
I just want to commend everybody for being out here. It's obvious, everybody's very passionate about this, this situation. I really appreciate everybody being here. Also, I think everybody that's here was also at the planning commission meeting. And I want everybody to, encourage everybody to understand the process. I'm the new guy at the table up here, so I had to really dive deep into all this to kind of understand the process and understand the planning aspect of it, and then the actual, what we're here for tonight, which is rezoning. Every question that I had has kind of been explained to me already from the questions that I've already had, so I don't really have anything else to say.
Councilman Doerr?
Thank you. To echo the comments of Councilmember Littrell, I sincerely want to thank you all for attending tonight. It's two nights away from your family, and you've spent a lot of time with us, and genuinely thankful for the input. It's very, very helpful for us. I have three questions and a recommendation. The first is that, under normal circumstances, Mr. Burkett, I like to walk an area to take a look at it. It's not really feasible to do so, so I've driven by many times, but is there anything idiosyncratic about the property? I know there's a creek that runs through, but are there horse trails, wells, just anything we should know in terms, additional, in terms of making a decision?
It, I guess, other than the long frontage, the extremely tight curb at the northeast corner, and as you said, there's a creek that runs through the middle and an old dilapidated barn that, should this move, be moved forward, you know, that would be removed, which is a current, an eyesore in the area. But from a, something that specific, no, I mean, there's nothing other than those issues.
Appreciate it, thank you. On the five-foot minimum side yard buffer, what's included there? Because I live in a development in northern Beaver Creek where that is the case, it's five, it's five feet. Does that, where's the measurement of the five-foot buffer? Is it the house line? Does it include a bay window, awnings, anything that could interrupt or go into the five-foot area? Where is that calculated?
It's typically the foundation of the building. So if there's, I've seen it where some of the air conditioning units are on the side of the building in that five-foot area. So, I mean, those don't have to be set off five feet, or the bay windows typically bumped out a few feet. Most of the time, most of the bay windows I've ever seen are on the back of the house and not on the side, so you wouldn't really have a bay window. But I'm not saying that you can't have them. But typically, we look at the foundation, where the foundation sits. There's also caveat that no house can be closer than 15 feet from another house. So if one is set at five, then the next door will have to be set at 10 and down the line.
Yes, to the developer, there are some beautiful homes, but if each side has a bay window, I mean, there's the potential for being very, very close to one another.
Sure.
So it is consideration, and I have it in my home, and it just, it puts me very close to the neighbor. Third question is tangential to, I think, this discussion, but I'd like to follow up from Mrs. Griffith, who asked a question about accidents. And I just, I think, as council, if we could get information on the number of accidents at these various intersections, just to have the data, because sometimes it seems like there are a lot of accidents, but there are not. Sometimes it doesn't seem like there are a lot of accidents, but there are. So just to have the raw information, I think, would be very, very useful for all of us. Finally, I have a recommendation to the developer, should this move through, and I'm thankful for Mr. Shelton, because he referenced, I think, a similar issue that I have in my neighborhood. We have roads that are 23 feet wide, and parking, if there's a big get-together, it really is an issue. I have three kids, school buses getting through that area can be a real challenge, emergency vehicles, so I think if someone is putting down, you know, three, four, five, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars of investment, just to have something wider to traverse through a neighborhood, it's simply a recommendation for the developer. Thank you, Mayor. You have my time.
Thank you very much. This is tough. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yeah, it's new, right? Still getting used to it. But Vice, Vice Mayor Bales has a good ring to it, too, so I like it. I just want to clear up one thing, City Manager Landrum, there is going to be a traffic study, is that right?
I'd rather Mr. Mormon.
Or Mr. Mormon. I get the thumbs up from Mr. Mormon. Can you just explain quickly, just a little bit for the residents here, about the traffic study and what happens next?
Actually, two, they do theirs, we verify.
And I think there's going to be two?
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Yeah, the developer acknowledges that a traffic study is needed for this project. We've already talked to his consultant, we've already scoped the study. It hasn't been done yet, we're still, again, at the zoning stage. So when the plan comes back to City Council at the site plan stage, we'll have some more definitive data to share with you at that time. But there is going to be a traffic study, and as part of that study, accidents are one component of what we'll be looking at with that.
Before Mr. Mormon...
Are we going to do two? They're doing one, and we're doing one?
No, the way we typically do it is there, the burden to perform the study is on the developer. But what we'll do oftentimes is we'll hire a third-party independent traffic firm to review what they submit to us. So that's probably what, and a lot of times, we'll go back and try to recoup those costs from the developer, or review costs.
Before you sit down, can I ask an additional question? Thank you. As part of that traffic study, I want to address Mr. Soapcheck's concerns. Will the speed limit be assessed?
The speed limit, that really wouldn't be part of it. Accidents, of course, are part of it, turn lanes, safety issues, that's all going to be rolled into it. However, the speed limit, that would be a separate issue if you want to do a study, it would be up to City Council. It would be lawful to reduce it to 35 through there, per a high revised code, if council chose to. If you wanted to, we could perform a speed study out there, that could give you some more information to help you make that decision. But the lowest the speed limit could be set legally would be 35 miles an hour.
So it would be lawful? That's what you said, I'm sorry?
35 would be the slowest speed limit permissible.
Thank you. I like that idea. I support that. I think that would be something we should look into, especially with the concerns that we're hearing from residents now, if that's something we could do.
Sure, we could certainly perform that study, yes.
Yeah, thank you. And then I think the rest of my questions for zoning have all been answered. Thank you, Councilwoman Schwartz, for all those questions. Those were fantastic. And I think that's it for me on zoning.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and keep my comments to zoning issues as well, but I too want to thank everyone for coming out, sharing your perspectives, your concerns. Quite frankly, I understand them. As a resident who lives on a dead-end street right now, and having 50 new homes being built right next to me, I get it. I understand it. And it is frustrating for me to sit in this seat and not think about specific site plan issues, only when we're talking about zoning. But I do have a few questions I'd like to ask, to help me understand the way I'm going to perceive the rest of the zoning issue. Can you tell me, Randy, how long this has been noted in the land use plan as a vacant planning area?
Oh, the vacant planning areas go back to the, I believe, the 1989, early 90s, late 80s.
And at that point in time, it was noted that eventually it would be residential use?
It was, it was land used for low-density residential.
Right. And when the neighborhoods were built to the west, do you recall or did any minutes talk about the stub streets as future expansion, kind of understanding that vacant planning area?
We've always taken the design of stub streets as an intended to be extended, otherwise they would have had them cul-de-sacced. So when we look at the stub streets, we, you know, want to extend those into new neighborhoods. I mean, that's just the point of interconnectivity.
And R1A is low-density residential, meaning up to three dwelling units per acre, is that right?
Oh, there's a, the R1A is a zoning designation, and so that states it has to be 20,000 square foot lots, whereas the low-density residential, the land use plan, is up to, allows up to three dwelling units an acre.
Okay. And that, the actual number of dwelling units per acre will be determined at the specific site plan, but we're writing in the ordinance now that it can't be more than 2.1.
One, right.
Which is lower than three.
Yeah, 33% reduction.
Okay, so we're giving them a baseline that at the next phase, then they will present us with a specific site plan that has to at least meet that.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you for asking about the traffic study, and I look forward to that traffic study and the speed study. And thank you for explaining the impact fee district designation. And at the specific site plan, the width, can you explain about public streets and the widths?
Yes.
You did it at the planning.
Right, any of the internal streets will be constructed to, they'll be either public streets or private streets constructed to public standards, so they'll still be the 26-foot wide and then have curb and gutter and sidewalks. Some of the private streets up near the mall, I know that they're, they have the roll curb and they're less than 25 or 26 feet wide. So we don't do that anymore, but we at least have the 26-foot wide streets. We at least have the 26-foot wide streets.
Wow. Buffer zones are indicated on this plan, or, excuse me, no grade zones?
We didn't want to put it in, on the concept plan. We just have in the ordinance stating that any future site plan must show 25-foot no-cut zones on the north and the west.
And those lots, I mean, I'm trying to divide specific site plan from this. But those lots we've mentioned are already required to be larger.
Right.
Was there any consideration to any of the lots along Swiger, knowing that the eastern part are bigger lots?
Actually, I mean, the Swiger Road accesses the buffer. And that's actually outside of the city on the other side as well. So there's no, nothing in the zoning code that says they have to match outside of the city.
All right. Thank you. Finally, Mrs. Henderson, you nailed it. I appreciate your comments, and I agree with every one of your comments. We do need to consider what's best for our community, what the character of our community is. And I appreciate them very much. However, we're considering zoning tonight, which makes it difficult compared to specific site plans. So, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot. I just want to, first of all, thank everyone for showing up. It's, this is my first meeting as mayor, so I thought you all came for me. But, but I appreciate you being here because it shows concern for your community. And we're, we're all concerned for our community. We want what's best for our community. We are constrained in some ways legally for what we can do. But I think once we get past this and maybe into the specific site plan, we can look at a lot of your concerns and address a lot of them. And at this point, though, it's, it's just about zoning. So this is the first phase of the zoning, and we'll have to rule on that. So this is a first reading for the ordinance to, we have a motion?
Motion to move ordinance 24-1 to a second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This is an ordinance, so we do a voice vote or voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We'll move this on to the second reading. And again, thank you all very much for coming tonight. We really appreciate your concern for our community, and we want to try to do what's best for you. Okay, ordinance and resolutions and PUDs, resolution 24-1.
Resolution 24-1, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee, the Financial Administrative Services Director, to request...
Hold on just a minute. Let's, let's take a...
Okay.
Oh, no, just, just let them go out. Not a real break.
Yeah, she already told me. She said, "Good luck. Have fun."
Okay, we're back. Ordinance, resolutions and PUDs, resolution 24-1.
Resolution 24-1, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee, the Financial Administrative Services Director, to request advanced draws upon the amounts collected by the Green County Auditor for the City of Beaver Creek 2023 real estate and personal property taxes collected during calendar year 2024.
Mr. Casero.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. This is our annual request to the county auditor to advance us our property taxes. They collect property taxes all through the year. And for the ORC, they're required to send that to us in March and August. By putting in this request, we get that actually earlier. They'll send it to us when they get a big chunk, rather than waiting for those two semi-annual payments. And we utilize that money. We invest it right away as soon as we get it and get some interest on it. Last year, we got $14.3 million in advance of those two payments. And again, at these days, interest rates, that's a pretty nice little interest income for us. So this is just to request that the, that the county auditor sends us the money in advance. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 24-1.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-2, Mr. Landrum.
Resolution 24-2, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council recognizing Chief G. Fear, Chief Jeff Fieritas' service to the City of Beaver Creek and approving the city manager's reappointment of Chief Jeff Fierita to the position of Chief of Police effective January 14, 2024.
As council is aware of the succession plan that we've had, nothing's really changed here with this. It allows Chief to retire, it allows Jeff to, to retire the drop program that comes up against a hard, hard timeframe. As we're all aware, with the necessity of keeping a fully-staffed police force that we have been dealing with for multiple years now, the difficulty in it. And with other retirements on the horizon of senior staff, it's important that we stabilize our, our senior staff in the police force. So carrying Chief Fierita to continue is my recommendation, not only for, it's just the best interest for the City of Beaver Creek at this time. So I'm asking council approve my appointment of Jeff Fierita to continue as the Chief of Police.
Mr. Mayor, I enthusiastically move to approve resolution 24-2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Chief Fierita.
Thanks, Chief.
And your gift for that is you get to come up and make the next presentation. Resolution 24-3.
Resolution 24-3, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into the addendum to Green County Public Safety Information Sharing Network, PSISN, inter-agency agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. And thank you. I appreciate the confidence in carrying on.
You've earned it. Yes, you've earned it.
Thank you. As we mentioned last year in the, the budget process, there was probably going to be some changes coming to the PSISN agreement, especially with the potential moving of all the data storage from hard storage to a virtual-based storage. And that's the reason for this addendum. And ultimately, we have already budgeted for this change. But this isn't a, the addendum to have city manager and Mr. McHugh sign in with the agreement. So this is an addendum to the April 1, 2023 Green County Public Safety Information Sharing Network, which is commonly known as PSISN. On June 20, 23, the board approved a motion to move forward with negotiating a new contract with Tyler Technologies to transition to what they call the SaaS. It's cloud services. All parties will be required to pay additional costs for this new cloud service, along with the requirement to purchase a VPN for their entity. Again, the additional cost of the cloud service transition for the City of Beaver Creek is $21,500. That will be paid over a four-year period remaining in our current overall contract. And monies, again, have already been budgeted for that, as well as the purchase of the VPN item. And we're just recommending approval of this resolution so we can continue on with our communications that we have in Green County.
Thank you very much. Any input from council?
Yes, what's the breakdown in terms of information that's kept on paper versus what's kept in the cloud? Is there still a significant amount that's on paper? I know that there are issues with current congressional legislation about shredding, you know, paper copies. But just curious here.
We're bound by the high revised code and the sunshine law as far as the dates, the tenure of how long we have to keep information. Pretty much everything that we have is somewhere stored that we can have access to right now on, on paper. However, I wouldn't know the specific amount that was actually there. Keeping in mind, this, this is like the radio traffic, all the data storage and records and records management. So it includes all of that.
Thank you, Chief.
Now, is body cam footage stored in the cloud as well, or?
No, no, that is completely separate from any of this. That is all stored in hard drives in, at the police department.
Chief, is our PSISN financial contribution for this prorated or with, with the other communities? Are we paying the same share that we pay for the agreement for this additional that other communities are paying?
Correct. With, based on the size of our agency, yes. Obviously, like the Green County Board of Commissioners are paying the most. And then it's broken down between us, the township, City of Fairborn and Police and Fire, Fairborn, and as well, the Xenia Police and Fire are paying all the same.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
Move to approve resolution 24-3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 24-3. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Resolution 24-4.
Resolution 24-4, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Green County Council on Aging, Transportation, and Senior Center Services grant funding.
Erin, it's nice to see you.
It's nice to see you all. Good evening. This resolution is about our annual funding opportunity through the Green County Council on Aging. This important funding provides now over half of our budget for the senior center and its operations, as well as our valuable transportation program. The, the resolution and the agenda item report that you have in front of you pretty much spells it out. Thankfully, the Council on Aging has been understanding about our timeframe as it's a really quick window. They sent us this packet on the 21st, I believe, or maybe the week before that. It was late December, as everyone was getting ready for the holidays. And it's actually due today. They've said we can submit it tomorrow. But pending your approval, I'll be submitting that packet tonight, asking for that funding. You can see they break it down into two different areas. The senior center services at just shy of $160,000, and the transportation services at about $137,000. So for a total of $297,440 is what we're looking, looking for. It can be used for operation, maintenance, personnel, programming, capital purchases. So it's very flexible funding to have, and it's valuable for us. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Any questions from council?
Only comment I have is to thank the Green County Council on Aging. And, you know, our, our citizens do pay into their levy. So I appreciate that money coming back to be retrieved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 24-4.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 24-24, excuse me, 24-4. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Turn in your paperwork. All right. Decision item. As we all know, it's Charter Review Committee time, and we have 19 applicants. We, as we go through this, we'll have to have a motion to open nominations. And then there'll be nominations. And once those are completed, we'll have a closed nominations. When it comes to voting, you can vote for no more than seven, because there are seven positions. So keep that in mind as you go. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to open the nominations.
I move to open nominations for the Charter Review.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll take nominations from the floor. You do not have to do a motion to do it. The person, just nominate the person. And there is no second required.
Vicky Jimbrowne?
I nominate Walter Chin.
Yeah, take your time. We have to type these, type them in. Down to 16.
Mm-hmm.
For 15.
The new guy.
New guy.
Vicky Jimbrowne?
She's already been nominated.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry.
I nominate Laura Palumbo.
I nominate Katie Endicott.
Nominate Joyce Carter.
She's going to go too fast.
Mr. Landrum, do it. Close nominations? Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go one at a time. I'll call her name, and you raise your hand. And remember, you can only vote for seven. First name is Joyce Carter. Katie Endicott? Laura Palumbo?
That was mine, right?
Jordan Raider?
That's me.
Number, everybody can only vote. Seven times, I've done it.
Well, based on that, we have our seven.
We have one more vote.
Zach Upton?
You can still vote. Zach Upton? It's a tie.
It's a maximum of 49, though. It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a maximum.
That's true.
Can't be more than 40.
If you have a tie, for the fours?
The four falls off.
No, it's tied. Thank you. Everyone above.
Oh, there's two fours. I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, you got two, seven. Three, six, seven. Really, so I think at this point, you're down to four, four, and five. So do we vote for the two fours right now?
Okay. So you only get one vote between the two fours, Katie Endicott and Laura Palumbo.
It's one vote?
One vote.
And Laura Palumbo?
All right, so the lists are there.
Take the one name off. Okay, I need a motion to vote to approve these seven. Or point these seven.
Second.
List the names, please. List the names.
Do you want me to take it? I'll take the motion. Mayor, I move to appoint Joyce Carter, Walter Chin, Vicky Jimbrowne, Ivan Nunez, Laura Palumbo, Jordan Raider, and Zach Upton.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. They are appointed. And you will contact him. Ms. Haynes? I think we've come to council time.
No, we have one more decision.
One more on the back.
Did I miss it? I don't even have it, so I apologize. All right, we have a, an item to decide here. It's a national conference on CFIUS attendance by Councilmember Garcia. Need a motion to?
Do you have to read it first, Debbie?
There's nothing to read.
There's nothing to read. Okay.
Explain what it is, please.
Yes, no, I'd love to. Thank you, council and mayor, for the time for this. So our regulars in attendance will remember, back in September, we passed an ordinance on CFIUS, and we were the first in the nation to be a city to do that, to be the first one to do anything for CFIUS is, has been a big deal. We've had a lot of reach out from the local news, as well as some other local governments taking a look at what we've already done. And then I was invited to speak at the 10th Annual National Conference on CFIUS in DC, and it will be attended over a two-day period, actually, three. So the cost, I'll just talk about cost upfront. The, as a panelist, my attendance would be free. We would just be paying for rooms and flights, all of which comes out to a little less than $1,000 for the three nights and the flight. The first day, in my opinion, is the most important. It's going to be conference workshops, so the first part of the day is going to be talking about an introduction to CFIUS filings, and I think a lot of this were question marks for us when we first started this, especially when we had the fly-in in DC. A lot of the questions I had were practical questions. Well, what happens when we have to file? And where does the filing go? And then what's the process look like? And one of the big things we talked about was not wanting to halt development for something that may be nothing, but also still wanting to protect the base and all of the area residents. So the workshop itself will talk about the filing process, the timelines, the enforcements and penalties, and it will also walk us through the journey after filing, from case officers to approval, mitigations, and negotiations. And I think one of the, taking a look at the agenda, one of the strategy sessions is called Making High Stakes Time-Sensitive. So what do you do in the high-stakes situations where, again, you don't want to halt development, but you want to protect the development in the area? I think it would be very beneficial for the city, again, because we are the first city in the country to do this, to learn more as far as what our obligations are now that we have something in place. And it's also very good recognition for the city that we will be present on the panel to talk about what we are doing. I will be speaking on the second day, and this is all about state laws on foreign investment, updates on agricultural real estate transactions, and really where, I think it's where the gaps are, what the federal government is doing, but what the state and cities and local governments are doing to help with this process as well. So I would appreciate the support. Again, I think the cost would be less than $1,000 total when you look at travel and lodging, and the panel, the three-day event itself would be free in attendance as a panel speaker.
It was several thousand.
It was several thousand dollars, yes. It was, it was quite a lot of money to attend this, but they would not be making me pay, so.
Councilmember, I might just add.
Please.
CFIUS is, but.
Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States.
Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States.
Yes.
Yeah.
Our regulars know this. No, I'm kidding. Yes, no, Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States. And really, what it's doing is making sure there's no bad actors who are buying property close to the base for nefarious purposes, and given our proximity to the base, the relationship we have with them, and wanting to protect not only the base, but the residents in this community who work on base. CFIUS was just a really good piece to the DDC fly-in last April, and I thought it was very, really important that we brought that back.
I think information I've gotten from the base is they've been happy we've done it, so.
That's great, yeah. No, that's great to have that partnership.
Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I make the motion to approve Councilmember Garcia's attendance at the National Conference on CFIUS.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow Councilon, I can't even speak, I want to say Vice Mayor, but Councilman Garcia to go to the CFIUS conference. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bring back a lot of things.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the support, guys.
And now, am I right? It's council time. Okay.
Correct.
All right, since I stumbled over her before, I'll start with her, Councilwoman Garcia.
Oh, that's, that's nice. Thank you. Well, first, congratulations, Mayor Adams, on your first meeting. You did a great job. This was a tough meeting. It's a long one, and you did really well, so thank you for all that. Thank you again for the support for CFIUS. I appreciate the opportunity. I think it's great recognition for the city. The woman I spoke to was really excited to have Beaver Creek two words. We'll make sure it's one word on the official agenda when we get there. Also, a huge thank you to Anthony Deal's family. I was, I, I still can't decide if it's heartbreaking or heartwarming exactly what happened, and I think it's a mix of both. And to have it be that hero in this neighborhood, in this community, is just really fantastic, and my heart goes out to that family. I'm friends with Alice Britt, and it just, it's just a wonderful story, and tragedy on both sides, but just the love of family is so wonderful there. I also want to thank Pete Landrum, our city manager, and Katie Carrico for all of their hard work with the State of the City updates. Pete is incredibly active in our community, and I think it's so great to have our city manager out there. I don't want to say peddling, but I'm going to say peddling, our State of the City. Pete's going to be at the Rotary Meeting this Friday, and then also next Thursday at the Optimus Club. And it's just important to have these updates out there for our residents. I joked earlier about our regulars, but we do have some regular residents that come to the meetings. Thank you for your help in teaching everyone the ways and quieting everybody down so that we can move on with the meeting tonight. That was helpful. But it is really great that our city manager, and Katie, with all of her help, gets this information out to our residents. There's just so much going on in the community for people to know about, and it's really beneficial to have that. We did not have a January MVRPC meeting, so that cuts my report much shorter. There will be one in February, so I'll report back. And I do want to have one final thanks to Chief Fiorita. He's somewhere around here keeping us safe, but I think city manager Landrum said he's right for the city, and he is perfect for the city. He's been doing a great job. I'm very excited that he's going to remain on as chief, and I know he's doing great things for our department, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Ooh, switching it up. Thank you, Mayor. I would first like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and to welcome Councilmember Little to the team, and to congratulate Mayor Adams. I'm still getting used to that, too. And so I'm excited for this new year and what it has to bring. I also want to thank you, Mayor, for the heartfelt presentation that you gave for the Carnegie Medal. It clearly brought me to tears. It is a very heroic act, and I think that it is really important that it was recognized, and so I want to thank you for that. And with that, I don't really have a whole lot in the new year, so I'm going to say thank you.
Very good. Now the new guy. Councilman Little.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations. It was fantastic. We got elected at the same time. I want to take a moment to thank all, everybody that works here for me, with Beaver Creek and staff. It's amazing to go from knowing a couple people by names, and then all of a sudden meet everyone all at the same time. It was a little overwhelming, and then slowly learning all the work that you all do on a weekly, you guys are here all the time, you know? I even asked my wife this morning, how, how many hours do you think they spend there a day, you know? She's, I don't know, I don't think about it. She spends a lot of time at work, so. And, and Katie, you're, that, that presentation, the, the video that you put together, that was amazing. I actually went home and made, made Melissa, made sure she seen it. It was a, it was an amazing, I applaud you on that. I can't imagine the hours of work that went into that, and, and my questions will come rolling out now that I've been through this now, and then everybody starts asking me, so I just look forward to working with everybody, and, and, and that's really all. I don't want to say it's overwhelming, it's kind of what I thought it was going to be, so thank you all. Appreciate it.
Well, we welcome you to the, to the group. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your, Your Honor. Again, I want to extend the very best for the new year to all of our citizens, to certainly our city council. We're just looking forward to great things. Realize we have a lot of challenges ahead, but I think we'll be able to meet them properly. Also, I want to thank the city manager for his presentation, as already been mentioned, and look forward to the Rotary Presentation coming up, manager. And that's all I have at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Doerr.
Happy New Year, and congratulations, Mayor Adams. You already have me on my toes, the way this is going.
You've got to mix it up a little bit.
Mayor Stone, every now and then caught me, so. And welcome, Councilmember Little. Great to, great to have you. I want to thank all the, the residents that came out tonight, really very helpful in making a decision. And Mr. Burkett, I want to thank you for all of your hard work. You're always amazing, very precise, and so thank you for just very accurate information that you provide regularly. I have the joy of providing work anniversaries, and so I believe they're on the board, and I'll, I'll read those. Want to thank all of our staff, and as you'll see, just the, the years of service, it really is remarkable longevity and tenure here. So Jeff Fiorita, our police chief, 32 years of service. Captain Sean Sumner from police, 32 years. Andy Ambern from golf, 19 years. Joe Moore, golf, 19 years. Greg Weisert, police, 16 years. Clayton Campbell, public services, 15 years. Kevin Vance, public services, 15 years. Zach Wyke, Parks, Recreation and Culture, 14 years. Karen Mahaffey, police, 13 years. Joel Diaz, police, 12 years. Terrence Sullivan, golf, 12 years. Jerry Russell, public services, 12 years. Mike Winterbottom, public services, 12 years. Sarah DeBoer, police, 10 years. Laurie McIntosh, police, eight years. Joel Schuler, police, seven years. Tyler Barlagi, senior center, four years. Trevor Gray, public services, three years. Dottie Science, finance, one year. Derek Alley, public services, one year. Mason McLean, public services, one year. And Tony McKee, public services, one year. An incredible list, and thank you all for your great work at the city. Two quick announcements for me. I have a couple of speaking engagements forthcoming, one on the 11th at St. Leonard's Community in Centerville. Usually, there are a good number of Beaver Creek residents that attend, but I'm talking about US foreign policy and the lead-up to the 2024 presidential election. And then I'll be speaking at the Men's Prayer Breakfast at Patterson Park Church on the 20th, talking about an update in Israel. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Happy New Year to everybody, and welcome, Councilman Little and, and Mayor Adams. I want to really thank the citizens that came out tonight. Citizen input is very special, very needed, and so important in our process, so I really appreciate that. Understanding the concerns is, is something we, as a council, need to do, even though in this case tonight, we're just talking about zoning and not a lot of those specific concerns. But I really do appreciate it, and I do thank staff for handling all of those concerns gracefully and professionally, understanding that there's phases to this process as well. So thank you very much. I have not had any committee meetings yet this year either, so I don't really have much of another report to give, so I believe I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess it's my time. Mr. Burkett, I have a question. The gentleman sitting beside you, who is he?
There you go. That's a good question.
As you had that list up, I told him someday you'll get your name on that. This is our new city planner, Colin Carville. He comes out of Tipton City. He was there for four years. He's got a degree from University of Dayton. I'll let him talk more about himself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Colin Carville. I am the new city planner. I'm very thankful to be here. I have an undergrad from Bradley University, which is in Peoria, Illinois, and I got my master's from University of Dayton, which kind of brought me here, and I've kind of fell in love with the area and decided to stick around. So once again, very thankful to be here, look forward to working with all of you in the future, and yes, I have a great mentor, too, so.
Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Paid him $3 to say that.
And I also would like to thank the Deal family for coming tonight and sharing that moment with us. I'd like to take credit for what was said tonight, but what I wrote, Katie took and made it just that much better, so she's, she's an awesome at doing those things. I was able to attend the Ohio Mayors Alliance Annual Meeting in Columbus in December. I think that's a really good organization for us to be involved in. It's the top 30 mayors in Ohio for the top cities, 30 cities, as far as population goes, and it's nice to have a, be at that table and have a chair at that table. We're listed at number 22, largest city in, in Ohio, so we get to interact with the We get to interact with the large-city mayors on a more personal level and also try to affect legislation in the state that will affect our city. So that's, we have some impact there, so that's good. I won't go into everything I have done, but the one thing, Bears for Children's Program, I got to participate in that in December. That's a, a thing that was put together by one of our Beaver Creek Youth Council people, Calista Hess, several years ago, I think 2008 was when she first started it. And in 2008, she had twelve bears to give to children's. This year, she gave four hundred bears to children's.
Wow.
And over the years, she's given 4,156 bears to children's. What they do is they do that around the holidays so that the kids that are stuck in the hospital over the holidays have something, and there's a, a message that goes with it from each person that makes it. And, you know, they know the heart was taken and rubbed, and it's just a, a great event. She's now tax deductible, so if you want to donate to that, it's bearsforchildren.com. I was able to attend the investiture of our new municipal judge in Fairborn, the Honorable Andrew Hunt. That was an impressive event, impressive event to be able to attend that. I'd never been to one of those before, and that's, that was a lot of fun. Also, I just, I hope everyone had a great Christmas and holiday season, and we're really looking forward to a, probably a fun and exciting new year. Hopefully, we do the things that we're supposed to do from this side of the table. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to everyone. It is exciting to be here and working with all the council members and new vice mayor, new mayor, new council members. So congratulations to all. I did want to, I will be speaking at Rotary at, held at Golf Course, the Golf Club, at twelve o'clock Friday, this Friday, for the Giving the State of the City. Little, little, I can't even say, my regular one's not as long as it used to be, but this one will be probably even more abbreviated than that one was. And allow time for questions. Now, they're short, don't, 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 don't laugh. It was short, what was it, thirty-five minutes or something like that? It was a lot shorter. Used to be an hour or something, so it's, it's, it's went the right way. Thanks to Katie's video, all right? That's, that's why it's cut it down. Wonderful video. And also then, Thursday the 18th, at the Mosaic Church, at five o'clock, with the Optimus Group, I will be giving the State of the City to that group. So please feel free to join either one of those groups. So you don't have to join the group, but join to hear the State of the City then. Just tonight, real quick, we have posted boards and commissions. Posted on our website, I think we are advertising for it on our social media as well. So volunteer boards and commissions and committees that serve our community by advising policymakers and providing essential support to city programs and activities. So additional website, go to our main website, and you will see an article. You can click there, it'll drive you to what boards and commissions, and there's a volunteer form that you have to fill out, and you fill in the priorities of like choice option number one, option number two, option number three. You tell about yourself, you can submit a resume, you can do all that kind of stuff. So please consider serving on boards and commission. City council will be having the list of all the appointments of the last meeting in February. So I do believe the applications are due by February 9th. Have those in.
I have a question.
Yes.
Several of the members of, that expressed interest in the Charter Review Committee had submitted applications with other boards on there. Are they automatically going to be considered for those boards in this cycle? Or do we have to reach out to them? Do they have to do anything different?
If they made other options and were not selected, yes, we can include those.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, we have them, so.
Yeah, I mean, there were quite a few that I noted, that a few of them weren't selected for the Charter Review, but had expressed interest.
Yes, and, yeah, we definitely will on those.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. So get your applications submitted to us as quickly as you can. Let's build a snowman. I hate to even say this, but, you know, it is gonna get cold. It is January, for goodness sake, so. A snowman, Parks and Recreation Department, Culture Department, do a contest to build a snowman or a creature and email the picture to parks@beavercreekohio.gov by February 29th. Probably between now and then, we'll have a significant snow amount to do that. Pictures will be shared on Facebook, and the family who submits the photo with the most reactions will win a prize for the family. So we have had some creative snow creatures, snowmen in the past, so it's a lot of fun, and the kids like it, so please continue. Now hiring Beaver Creek Police Department, applications for police officers and communications operator. Applications now being accepted for the seasonal position of Golf and Parks and Recreation and Culture. And for additional information, just go to city's website and click on employment. See all of our full-time, part-time, and even seasonal positions. And our city offices will be closed this Monday in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, which is Monday, January 15th. And as always, for non-emergencies, contact the Beaver Creek Police Department on that day, 937-426-1225. And of course, if it's an emergency, 911. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We come to citizens' comments. If there's anyone that'd like to come and speak to the council on any topic, please step forward, give your name and address. Don't everybody come up at once. Seeing none, we'll close the citizen comments portion, and I will entertain a motion. I think that's pretty definite. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.